I'd like to reconvene in the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Go second.
I second.
Roll call vote, Mary. Jim.
Aye.
Rita.
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. That motion passed, we begin with board reports. Uh, Mrs. Washington. Is Nagina on?
Um, I just want to thank everybody again for the tremendous amount of work that they are doing, uh, in this unprecedented task, thanks to the superintendent and his executive team, um, everybody, teachers, students, parents, community, and all the people who are supporting us and giving us their opinions, and we are reading those letters and taking them very seriously. Thank you for your input.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, I have none.
Okay, and I don't think we have Nagina on, correct, Scott?
No, Nagina didn't join us today.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Weaver?
I have no information.
Um, on Monday, I participated in a MAB legislative meeting that was attended virtually by about nineteen of the systems across the state, board members from, from those systems. It's always an interesting conversation to learn what other systems are doing in terms of, um, meeting the challenge of, of COVID-19 and, um, and educating students, so, um, it was a rather long and involved meeting, but, uh, I was, I was pleased to be able to listen.
Okay, and I have no report, so we will turn it directly over to Dr. Smith for the superintendent report.
Well, thank you very much, and let me do a share screen and move over to just the presenter. I appreciate the board's flexibility in allowing us to gather, uh, in between board meetings, as we are today. I think that, uh, as we continue to move through the situation where we find ourselves, having flexibility and being able to meet to have conversations and having those conversations in the public is exceptionally important so that our, uh, community members, our parents, our students, our staff members, everybody can understand the rationale and reasoning behind the decisions that are being made, and more importantly, understand that decisions aren't made in a vacuum, that they are collaborative in nature and try to, um, uh, address as many of the, of the challenges and concerns that we may have. That's not to say that everybody will agree with decisions made, uh, more, it's, I think it's much more realistic to recognize that any decision made is going to have people on one side and people on the other side, and that's kind of where we are. Uh, this update today is really just to give you an update on two things. Uh, the first is the Education Stabilization Fund, Elementary and Secondary School Relief Reopening Schools Incentive Grant that was released, um, on September 18th, and I referenced it at the board meeting last week to let you know that we had, uh, we had received it, that we had unpacked it, that we had talked through the component pieces of it, and that it is due October 2nd this Friday, and that the grant itself required six things. First, it had to have a summary of our reopening plan, that's fine, that's already embedded in our recovery plan, we have presented it several times over the last several months, we have that pretty much generated, they just wanted a synopsis of this for the grant. The second is a description of students who will be returning to school and under what cohort that would be. Um, the third is the number of students, uh, by grade level, and number of schools that will be in-person learning at the start of the second quarter of the school year, uh, and then the process for bringing them back and what that looks like and how that is all laid out. Um, that is important because the grant includes a base dollar amount, every single LEA will receive $200,000, but then, based on the number of students you have in school at the start of the second marking period, at the end of the first marking period, start of the second marking period, you will then receive a, another amount of money, and, uh, Ms. McCourt is on the line, she can give some more specifics to that when we get to that screen, but it's an incentive grant, so it awards money for people who have students in, for in-person instruction, um, at, at the end of the first marking period and the second marking period. The next is the timeline for returning all students, um, and for, to in-person learning, um, how we will meet equitable service requirements, and then ultimately, the money to be received, how will that money then be used for, uh, implementing, um, uh, return-to-school activities within a school system. So, um, the first, we've already, the first requirement, we've already presented several times, it's familiar, it's there, you can go take a look at it, we're, we're not modifying that really at all. Um, description, description of student groups returning, um, we had basically a Phase One group, which are special education regional programs, those are children who are enrolled in the, the Compass program and the Sale program, regionally, that are collected throughout the county, um, and Head Start is another one of these, of these groups, um, in Phase One. Phase Two is the, uh, is Pre-K, K, 1, 6, and 9, um, that's ultimately added to, um, by grade 12, so that's the second phase, um, and then the final phase is when all kids come back, Pre-K through 12.
Can I just add one thing there?
Sure.
On the Compass and Sale, I know there's a lot of questions among parents that, just because your child has an IEP does not necessarily mean that they fall into those two groups.
No.
They're specific dedicated programs that your child is enrolled in.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, so the timeline that we're putting forward and is built into the grant is that, um, on October 7th, we are going to begin bringing back in our students who are enrolled in, in regional programs, that's Compass and Sale, and people know exactly, the parents are very well aware if they, if their kids are in Compass or Sale, if you're not sure if your, your child is in a Compass or a Sale program, your child isn't in a Compass or a Sale program. Um, it's a total of 203 students who are enrolled in these programs across St. Mary's County Public Schools, so it's a little bit more than 1% of the student population is in one of these programs, and October 7th is the day that we start phasing kids back in, each one of these programs may have only a handful of children at a particular school, and so we are working directly with the parents and the school administrators and the, the teachers and the social supports, um, staff that's involved in all that to coordinate. So, on October 7th, all of these children might not be back in, it'll be depending upon the program and the school and the child, and these parents will have direct communication with St. Mary's County Public School staff to coordinate all of that, including transportation, because for some of these students, transportation is a very specific requirement, uh, and, and it has to be done in a certain way. That gets us basically through the month of October to the end of the first marking period, but before we end the first marking period, before we bring back that first large cohort of almost 5,000 students, we want to do an orientation day on Wednesday, October 28th, for the first group, because remember, we're going in a hybrid, so we're taking that 5,000 kids and we're dividing it into 2,500 on one day, 2,500 on the other day, that's how we're keeping our class size to the CDC-required, recommended, um, class size of a, anywhere from 10 to 14 students. Um, so we have an orientation on the 28th, uh, where we'll bring back our Pre-K kids, our kindergarten kids, our sixth-grade kids, and our ninth-grade kids, and why we're bringing back th- those particular students for that particular orientation is because they haven't stepped foot yet, instructionally, into an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school, so, um, giving them a day to come in, meet their teachers, travel throughout the school, understand the spacing protocols, the guidelines, the masking, what's available for them throughout, making sure that they all have the technology in place, that they can seamlessly use their laptops from home and get them connected when they go into a class, all of that stuff happens on the 28th and the 29th. And there's a, there's a reason for that as well, as we roll into the first week of the second marking period, we'll then round that all out by adding first graders and 12th graders. So that first cohort group in, in Phase Two is Pre-K, K, 1, 6, 9, and 12, and that's 7,174 students. All of those students would then be eligible to be included in the grant for consideration for funding, and, and Ms. McCourt can give the exact amount, it's not a, it's not a, an overwhelming amount of money that's associated with each one of those students, but that is, that's the number that we can then plug into the formula to receive funds for the grant.
I have another question.
Sure.
All right, for the orientation, just to be clear for, for everyone, orientation is not an open house.
No.
Orientation is, the child will literally go to school.
For the full day.
For the full day.
On the bus.
And walk through, quote-unquote, their day.
Yes.
As if they were attending normally.
Right.
Just so everyone is clear, not an open house.
No, it's, yes, it's a, it's a day of orientation, as opposed to what traditionally had been done, where you drop in, parents get to go with their children, obviously, in a pandemic, we can't afford them that opportunity.
Correct.
So, and most parents have probably met their teachers virtually, I would assume, multiple times over the last five weeks.
Just so they can get a lay of the building?
Yes.
And so, we put them on the bus, they're on their own?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the, the student numbers that you're indicating there, are those students who have already indicated?
No.
Whose parents have already indicated they want them back in the building, or does that include the potential of students who may, um, who may choose to remain virtual?
Yes, so, no, this is, the numbers reflect total enrollment.
Okay.
The surveys indicate that as much as 25% of students may continue, may elect to continue virtually, so, when, so basically subtract one-quarter of all of those totals, and that's going to be the number that's going to come back. Um, we've got survey data, and now, we are having the schools, and throughout the month of October, the individual schools will be reaching out to every single parent to determine the children, whether they're coming back to school, and if they are coming back to school, whether they want transportation, those are the two questions that were asked on the survey, they're now following up, they've all been put in a spreadsheet. The schools are then going back and taking every single one of our students and either designating them in Group A, which will attend on Monday and Wednesday, or Group B, which will attend Tuesday and Thursday, or Group V, students who are electing to stay home and be in virtual instruction. This then, they'll run the, the, the class lists again, so that we can make sure that we have, um, a balance of students in each one of the, in each one of the classes. Easier to do at the elementary, teachers are assigned, kids are assigned to a homeroom. When we get to middle school, it's a bit more challenging in that kids move throughout the day, and they, although they are on teams, they might have different classes, so sometimes that is, presents a challenge with balancing things. When you get to the high school, it's a, it's exceptionally difficult to figure out how to separate a class, because children don't move in a cohorted group through the exact same classes, the exact same period, they don't. They may be taking this level of English and this level of math and this interest fine arts and this, so, the high school principals and assistant principals and counselors and, um, teachers are working on those particular lists to see, and where it isn't a clean split, and you're going to have 16 or 17 kids if they all show up in a class, then we're going to have to modify what that class looks like, where that class is being held, the, the access and the resources that the teachers have for them, that is the, that is the work of this month.
And where does the tech center program play in this?
Tech center will run just like the regular tech center does, there's an AM, a PM, and a midday, and because we're going back to a straight eight schedule, they'll be able to fall right into that. So the, the difference is that the tech center children may only get to the tech center once a week, depends on how the, how the schedule, how the scheduling works out for them, because again, we're going to a hybrid schedule where you only, you only have every other day. So, um, that gets us through November 2nd, and then, um, November 16th, all students are back in, we have, and this is a challenge, our official enrollment right now looks like it's about 17,398 kids. That is down from last year. So, uh, as we, as we move forward and we are in September 30th, and we do our official September 30th count, we go through all those things, we do cross LEA reconciliation of stuff like that, um, we are, it would appear that we are down in our enrollment, and if about 200 kids, if we're down 200 students, that's a, a little over $4 million in, in decreased funding if we are to follow maintenance-of-effort PPA. So that'll be a conversation, obviously, that we engage in as we start looking at the budget for next year. Um, equitable services, uh, we're following, we, this has been, uh, uh, put into every single one of our programs as we go through, um, we will be working with our non-public schools, we're going to be doing affirmation consultation, we're talking through everything, um, and the estimated allocation for equitable services is about $9,453 for those people who don't, in the, within the non-public, um, sector. Now, the planned use of funds, we're going to need a little flexibility on this, because we're not going to be able to determine exactly what the final count is until after we submit, so, and MSD hasn't worked that out as well. So we believe, we anticipate, we forecast that the total grant amount will be about Not a grand amount, but certainly money, every dollar is dear, we'll certainly take it. So, we do know that the way we are using data for the KJ hotspots that we have already allocated out to families who are not connected to a, the cable system and can't get cable, we recognize that we're going to need to increase the data for those, because our teachers are synchronously teaching online for more than the three-and-a-half hours that we originally trans, it, it can be much more than that, so, we're going to allocate $50,000 just to enhance the KJ data service plans. The rest of the money will be for, uh, purchasing more laptops, recognizing that every time we get a dollar and we're going to purchase more laptops, um, recognizing that out the door, hopefully within the next several weeks, we're going to be, we're going to be able to have the resources to be able to be one-to-one, and we need to then start building our stock of computers that are actually in the buildings, because there obviously will be a certain number of computers that don't find their way back to St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, the way it looks on a map of the, of the month is, we are, hard to believe, but next week is October, um, halfway through that week, we're going to start bringing back regional programs, and again, working directly with the families and the teachers and the support staff and the administrators and transportation, throughout the month of October, we're going to be bringing back these regional programs and providing services, in-person services for kids. And the number, if everybody was to come back, is 200, so if we follow the same staffing, you know, whatever, with 70, with, you know, 75% of that, it might be about 150 students or so, but that will be phased in over the three weeks of October that get us to the very end of the first marking period, so the marking period ends on the 30th, the day before Halloween, um, and before the marking period ends, we're going to have an orientation day for the first group of kids on the 28th, and an orientation day for the second group of kids on the 29th. Again, the children will get on the bus, where the parents will drop them off at the school, they will go through a regular school day, but truly, the focus of that day is going to be acclimating them to in-person instruction in school buildings. When we get to Octo, when we get to November, at November is a bit of, November's going to be a lot of fun, no matter how you slice it, there's going to be a lot of things that are going on in the United States of America. So we'll bring back the first full Phase Two cohort on Monday, that's Group A, Pre-K, K, 1, 6th grade, 9th grade, 12th grade, so half of all those students will be attending on Monday. Now Tuesday is an election day, and so we will not have staff, we will not have students, nobody will report, but we're going to still hold the placeholder like that's a B day, so on Wednesday, Group A comes back again, Pre-K, K, 1, 6, 9, and 12, and Thursday will be the first time that that second cohort, pardon me, Thursday will be the first time that second cohort comes back into the building. So, on that first week, Group A is in-person twice, Group B is once, Friday remains the virtual day, the catch-up day, the class hours day, the professional development day, the instructional planning, because that's when the teachers are doing all of their planning for the upcoming week, as well as all of the, touching base with all the kids for the previous. The next week in November, Group A and Group B, Monday, Tuesday, up Wednesday is Veterans' Day, so Wednesday, Group A doesn't meet, but Group B does on that Thursday, so within that two-week cycle, both of our groups are in-person for three days. The next group after, the next week after that, that's the first full week, A-B, A-B, Friday virtual, the week after that, the last week of November, Group A, Group B, and then we go to Thanksgiving, uh, break. If we make it to December, and we're going to make it to December, we make it to December, we have three weeks that are uninterrupted with an A-B, A-B, virtual, A-B, A-B, virtual, A-B, A-B, virtual, and then we get to our winter break. I did not forecast this out into January, but assuming all is going well, this would be the exact same model, we will follow to the end of the second marking period, the end of the first semester, and throughout the months of November and December, we will come back before you to give you information on how it's going, what that all looks like, all of that, because when we get to the second semester, we may very well want to revisit this model, depending upon how many kids we have who are attending, how successful that is, how many kids are virtual, how successful that is, and the overall, uh, health and well-being of this, of the staff, because this is exhausting. This is exa, and everybody, and everybody knows that this is exhausting, everybody knows that there, and, uh, the speaker we had, Ms. Groner, last, last week, talked about surge capacity, that we have this reserve of adrenaline that helps us get through an event, and this event just never ends, it just keeps going, and keeps going, and keeps going, and keeps going. So, um, this is going to be a, a key component piece of, of our discussion as we roll through this, because we have never done this before. Um, but this is the only way we can get kids back into in-person instruction and abide by all of the rules set forth by the, the CDC, the Maryland Department of Health, the MS, and MSD. I know that everybody, it'd be easier if we just said, "Schools are open, everybody comes back in," but we can't conform to all of those, uh, regulations and requirements unless we go with this pattern of return.
So, wait, be, can you go back?
Sure.
Any, do the December calendar, because that's the easiest one.
Oh.
So, if I'm a parent.
And you are.
And I am, and I select virtual learning for my children.
Right.
So are they still slotted in a Group A and Group B for instruction?
So if I, so I'm going to look at it from the perspective of a teacher.
Correct.
So as a, as a teacher, I have, uh, 24 kids in my class, okay? The, the administration is going to go through and designate, once they find out who's returning and who's not, so the first thing they're going to do is they're going to find out how many kids are virtual, and they're going to be then ca, categorized as V, and so they will be, they stay on the teacher's role, the teacher is still responsible for educating all those virtual kids, right? The remainder kids will be divided in two, with an A group and a B group. So, when a teacher looks at their roster, they're going to see 24 kids, and some are in Group A, some are in Group B, and some are virtual. So, that's, that's the part that, there's been a lot of consternation and a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion, and at the next board meeting, we'll come back, and we've got, we've got a whole presentation just on what instructional modeling could look like while you're doing that.
Okay, so before everyone gets all fired up and starts sending emails and messages and blowing everything up, just because we have Group A, Group B, and Group, and Virtual on Friday.
V, yes.
Does not necessarily mean that if you decide to go virtual, that your child will not, not receive instruction Monday through Thursday and, and will only have the access to the system and teachers on Friday.
Right, I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, teachers are.
I just want to make that point out there.
There are such a host of tools, and there are so many different ways that teachers are, are, are meeting and interacting with kids and they're, so, I also have a child in school, and one of the things that the, that one of his teachers did was actually did a little screencast, actually recorded them saying, "Hey, student, um, I see that you haven't turned in these things," and there's a little screencast that shows exactly where they are and what it looks like, and it was just emailed, it was just an email with a video that you go into. Um, there's incredibly creative ways that people are doing this, the most important thing is we recognize is that, um, the, the connection between the child and the teacher, whether you are in Group A, Group B, or Virtual, is, is going to maintain through the first semester of the year.
Okay.
Because what we, what I will, I think we're going to see is there might be some parents who say, "My kid's going to be virtual," and then see that it's successful coming back those days and say, "You know what, my child really wants to go back, can they?" They're just going to coordinate that with the administration, we'll have to figure out how they fit and what, because we can move them seamlessly through groups. The other reason why we're doing it like this is in the event that we do have, uh, positive COVID case that results in a larger quarantine and we see transmission, if we shut down, we just go right back to everybody's in, in a virtual. Beyond that, if we have a teacher who has to go on quarantine, they can drop right back into virtual and their kids can continue along virtually, and the school administration then would be responsible for having a substitute to work with the in-person children throughout. There are, there are just so many, there are so many moving pieces to this, and everybody has really, really great ideas, and sometimes very passionate advice, um, but we really have tried to figure out how to get the most that we possibly can out of this really, really, really challenging situation. Um, so with that, that will be in the grant, um, the grant will, will finish it by Friday, it will all be written up and sent off. Um, I'm assuming there's going to be a fairly quick turnaround from MSD, once they turn around and they tell us that they have approved, or we need to amend, or what have you, we come back before you for a formal presentation of the grant, the amount, the award, and then for your action of then either accepting the grant or what have you.
Before Mike starts, whoever's on the Zoom call, if you are not speaking, could you guys mute your microphone, because there is something that's coming across that is making it difficult, I think, for Scott's discussion to transmit back out?
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, the second thing we wanted to talk about was the, uh, we were just together on Wednesday, and we had a lovely board meeting, and on Thursday, sometime in the afternoon, um, the Governor Hogan and, um, State Superintendent Karen Salmon, uh, announced that, uh, school systems are being presented with, uh, an option, we're giving them, they're giving us an option, how, you know, about, about fall sports. This after, they'd given concrete guidance, uh, just two weeks before, and every LEA in the state of Maryland has submitted a return-to-play plan that was reviewed and then approved, now a new option, so I wanted, we want to walk through how we responded, and ultimately, what we're doing as a school system, um, with the new option that has been presented. So at this point, um, I hope, I hope that, uh, Mr. Michael Watson is on the line, Mr. Watson, are you on the line?
May I just mute?
Yes, sir, Dr. Smith, good morning, can you hear me?
Yep, I sure can.
Okay, thank you. Morning, board members.
Good morning. Good morning.
So, um, as Dr. Smith discussed earlier in his presentation, uh, we are definitely part of those, um, those moving parts and that flexibility, um, ever since the cancellation of spring sports towards the end of the 1920s school year, we have been trying to plan for what sports may look like this fall. Uh, throughout that time, MPSAA and MSD has had several announcements, so my first three slides are really indicating just the amount of information and change and modification that we've had to go through over the last several months, uh, throughout the summer, just like all of the staff in education, so. Um, on June 11th, the, uh, outdoor participation was approved, and you can see there that, uh, there were COMAR waivers that were approved by the state, those waivers basically allowed us to, um, coach and to instruct our players and to, um, modify our summer activities into our fall activities. Conditioning and weight training were approved, and then with the August 3rd announcement, which was a major announcement, that the fall and winter sports seasons were to be postponed until the second semester, which would be February 1st. On September 11th, um, Tuesday before, let me go back before, in the meantime, August 3rd to September 11th, since the, um, state pushed back the competition seasons for fall and winter, St. Mary's County Public Schools. winter, St. Mary's County Public Schools were busy developing our, continuing our summer program, but busy developing our two-semester plan. We also are busy developing the seasonal lineup and the procedures that would guide us through our first semester. On September 17th, just about a week after, as Dr. Smith alluded to, that the two-semester plan was approved by MPSAA and MSDE and PIZAM, the superintendents were presented a secondary option for fall sports to start not October 7th, but September 23rd. That same presentation was then given to my counterparts across the state, all 24 directors of athletics. I had that same presentation again with fall sports possibly beginning September 23rd as an option, not October 7th. Next slide, please. And then the following week, the superintendents were presented to again, not with the September 23rd option for the start of fall sports, but with October 7th. And then the following day, the governor and state superintendent announced that there was a new option for locals to decide on with fall sports starting again that October 7th. So needless to say, we've been kind of on a roller coaster of emotions and schedules and dates and things like that as a system. Throughout this process and throughout the summer, we have had a return-to-play committee. The return-to-play committee, we were part of the recovery plan for education for Maryland. Our return-to-play committee drafted that section of our recovery plan locally that was submitted, I believe, on August 14th, if I have that date correct, to the state. And on our committee, we have 20 members. They consist of principals, assistant principals, coaches, ADs. Dr. Brewster, our health officer, was on our committee, experts in sports medicine, athletic trainers, so we have a very well-rounded committee that brings a lot of different perspectives to light when we discuss all of these options and the safety of our kids moving forward. We met first on June 23rd, and again, we've met throughout the summer using at least weekly, again, discussing all these announcements, making all these plans, making a summer conditioning plan. As you can see below, we've developed major initiatives, plans, and procedures regarding summer conditioning, our first semester athletics plan, and our first semester athletics procedures. I will go into each of those briefly here next. Our summer conditioning plan was a major success. It was outdoor only. It was built in conjunction with the Health Department. We did, again, we did not engage with weightlifting or indoor activities at that time. We went from July 13th to August 20th. We went three days a week, and most schools reported students participating at a rate of 75 to 150 students a day at all three high schools. So we had great participation. We definitely feel like kids were ready to get back into some type of normalcy and physical activity, and we had a very successful summer conditioning program. That leads us to our first semester plan. Again, after the announcement that on August 3rd that fall and winter sports will be postponed to the second semester, we immediately began developing plans for our first semester local activity plan. We identified three sport seasons, as you see on your screen. We have scrimmages outlined in each of those three sport seasons during the last two weeks of the five-week plan for each sport season. So for example, spring sports, they are currently going on, and we are in our second week. They will end on October 23rd. During the week of October 12th and October 19th, we will engage in school-to-school or interschool scrimmages between St. Mary's County Public High Schools only. So our kids will also get to play in a competition-based scrimmage for each of those three seasons. And then February 1st, when the second semester begins, we would engage in the MPSAA competition season as the second part of our plan for this school. The announcement on the 24th prompted our immediate meeting of our return-to-play committee. Again, the governor and the state superintendent announced that October 7th would be an option for locals to decide upon, that they may take. So we met on Friday, September 24th, the day after, as a committee. We met to discuss the most recent announcement. We discussed our two options of our current two-semester plan that we're currently engaged in and the state plan beginning October 7th. We discussed the impact that this would have on St. Mary's, on our SMAC conference, which is St. Mary's, Charles, and Calvert counties, and some of the impact that this may have on the state as a whole. So just to let you know, there are, here's just kind of a chart of options of what this looks like as far as scheduling goes. I won't go into these dates specifically, but just to let you know, we have a five-week season in our first semester plan, and then we have a five, a seven-week season with five weeks of competition in the state's second semester plan. As you can see, the October 7th option gives us those dates accordingly. So everything is just pushed back from September, or, I'm sorry, from mid-August to kind of early to mid-October. And then the normal fall season typically ends around November 1st, and then the playoffs occur, you usually have a little bit of crossover between winter sports starting November 15th. So we're pushed back several areas for the October 7th options, more specifically. The next slide just kind of goes into what you would, what our student athletes would engage in if we were to decide on the October 7th option or continue with our two-semester plan. As you can see, there's weeks of competition outlined for both. There are, it discusses overlap of seasons, which is, you know, a concern that we all have, and then a culminating event or tournament that would be a possibility for either plan that we do choose. So the impact on us locally, we are, again, we are currently involved in our first semester engagement plan. We have been so for about all of last week. I will remind you that the spring sports athletes did not have a competition season last year in 1920. So we decided in our first semester plan to start with our spring sports. Many things, many things factor into that decision, that being one of them, that they did not have a competition season, our availability of facilities, the fact that all of our spring sports are outside sports, fact that we don't have much light during this timeframe, and baseball, softball, and tennis courts and other areas are not lit, so our daylight is limited. But again, a lot of factors went into starting our first semester engagement plan with spring sports. Again, our SMAC conference, which is again, Charles, Calvert, and St. Mary's counties, we all play each other, obviously. In a normal year, we play, we play each other in competition during the season. If we were to choose the October 7th plan and our other two counties in SMAC do not choose the October 7th plan, I want to make it very clear that we would be competing against ourselves only. In the two-semester plan, the first semester, we are scrimmaging against ourselves only, but have the option in the second semester to engage in full-state competition, which would include SMAC competition between Calvert and Charles counties. For scheduling purposes, like I said, regarding SMAC, regarding those two options, we only have three high schools in St. Mary's County. So sports during the first semester, if we were to choose October 7th option, one sport would be idle each day. For instance, I will use football as an example. If you play every Friday night during that seven-week competition season that's outlined in the October 7th option, one of our high schools will be idle each week, which means they will not get seven games during that competition season. They would get three or four. That's just, an impact is if we were the only county in SMAC to choose the October 7th option. One thing that I and my counterparts across the state have asked clarification on from MPSAA is what does the culminating event or tournament mean? Is that a state tournament, state championship? Is that going to be available in both semesters? Is that going to be a district or a conference event? And is that going to be a non-elimination event? So all those things are still, all those factors are still not clear to us at this time, but it could mean regardless of state competition or not, that we would be able to hold county and/or SMAC championships as culminating events, particularly. After much discussion of our return-to-play committee on Friday, I'm going to thank all of those participants. I know the decisions are being made quickly here, and the decisions have to be made quickly in order for us to be ready for whatever plan that we choose. So we tried to explain, I tried to explain all those different scenarios and impacts, and we've been talking about those throughout the summer. So the, we all voted on Friday, and the committee would support 16 to 1, three people were out, that the system continue with our two-semester plan. That would be continuing with our first engagement, our first semester engagement plan that we've outlined already and have had approved, with five-week seasons for all three seasons, spring, fall, and the winter, leading up to February 1st, which is when we would engage in the two-semester, second semester, excuse me, second semester MPSAA competition season. I will note that there is some discussion across the state that that February 1st second semester competition season be possibly moved forward into December or into January, but again, just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that is a possibility and it is being discussed across the state. At this time, I wouldn't take any questions that you might have.
I think it's a good plan, Mr. Watson. Thank you to you and the committee. Just a couple of points that I think need to be made. Number one, I do agree your spring, our spring sports athletes did kind of get the shaft in, at the end of last year without having a season, and then to now have another, you know, quick change and switch over to fall sports, all the indications that I have heard from my counterparts in both Charles and Calvert counties is that they are not going to start playing, you know, competitive sports through MPSAA on October 7th. So your point in that, you know, basically we just be stopping a spring sports season, beginning a fall sports season, and still playing the same three high schools is completely valid. My other question, too, is right now, the way that we, that, or that you guys have set up the sports programs is with completely in keeping and understanding families' commitments to other things that they've committed to, you know, until, you know, an announcement was being made, there is some leniency on the teams and scrimmages, you know, if you can't make something because of another obligation that you had planned. So you are, student athletes are not quite under the tight constraints and regulations that they had as they have played in normal conditions. Like if you miss a practice, it doesn't mean that you have to sit a game or anything else because everyone is understanding that, you know, a lot of the children that play on travel teams have other commitments, you know, and it is, it is very widely understood among the coaches that we have that are running the practices now at the high school sports. So with that being said, if you would start with the October 7th season under true MPSAA guidelines, I'm assuming that the athletes would be under the more strict guidelines to attend practices, to attend games, you know, and there would not be the leniency that we have right now among the sports teams. So if, I'm assuming that was another factor that was brought in as well.
Yep. Yes, Billy, that's absolutely correct. The first semester engagement plan for St. Mary's County Public Schools is completely voluntary. Students do not have to engage in it, has no bearing on their second semester status.
Right.
You know, it is, in a normal year, yes, you know, coaches are way more stringent with you miss practice, you miss game time. There are also rules that, you know, indicate that if you represent a high school in an athletic contest, that has to take precedent over a travel team or another situation. So it is, again, you know, certainly, kids, we don't want, we don't want kids to be pulled in different directions, and they have an obligation to their travel team, they have an obligation to their school team, but in this case, in this scenario, yes, that is certainly a factor, and again, the first semester is completely voluntary.
Right. Right. Second semester sports, different story, but right now, since it was such a quick edict, I guess, that came down from above, it is the right decision, just because otherwise you'd be forcing students to choose, and they, clearly, they have dedication to, you know, multiple teams, you know, whether it's travel or rec or, you know, high school sports, and I just, it's just another unfair choice that they'd have to make.
I will say that Monday, I had noted earlier that I participated in a legislative meeting that was virtually attended by about 19, board members from 19 systems across the state, and to a person, everyone was, expressed great surprise over this announcement, and though I didn't bring my notes with me, my sense was the majority of them that weighed in said that they were likely to just stick with either not going back to sports or that whatever plan they had developed to start, they, their sense was that they were going to continue that process, much for the same reasons that have been articulated in terms of families are already stressed enough in terms of trying to plan for how they're going to approach school in general, and to have something thrown at them again, another change, was just really unthinkable.
It's really whiplash.
Yes. So, so I think that we're in good company in deciding to take this approach.
Thank you. I would also like to just add that our first semester engagement plan is very robust. It includes practices and scrimmages, which a lot of people in the state are not engaged in. A lot of counties in the state are merely engaged in conditioning activities and spill-based drills. So I would like to take the opportunity to thank Mrs. Bailey and the board, Dr. Smith, for allowing us to embark on our first semester engagement plan, which includes practices and scrimmages. Some of the biggest concerns that parents and players have had, they've worked their whole lives for athletics, and they also have aspirations of playing at the next level. So I think our scrimmages gave us a great opportunity, albeit not a sanctioned game, gave us a great opportunity for our kids to get film and to be in a legitimate competition, again, albeit a scrimmage, in order to get film and to go through the recruiting process. So I really appreciate the willingness of our board to let us do that. So thank you.
And a number of the systems that spoke also indicated that they, as a system, were not offering the conditioning and the sports, but rather it was being carried out through their rec and parks division, and that the school system had basically handed the whole thing over to them. The, I will ask you to speak, though, to how you are keeping students safe as they are scrimmaging, or as the plan is to scrimmage, as they are doing their conditioning. What specifically are you doing?
Thank you. So we have set procedures that all coaches have, that were developed through our committee, and that was discussed with our ADs, our ADs discussed that with our coaches, and all of our coaches on day one last Monday discussed all of the protocols, procedures with our students. So all students are coming to this facility with a mask on, they are leaving with a mask on. Basically, any time of non-vigorous activity, they are to wear their mask. They're required to have their mask on their person at all times. Each sport has disinfectant to wipe and spray down equipment. Social distancing is obviously a challenge, but also when they're not involved in a drill or in a specific practice, coaches are asked to keep our players socially distanced as much as possible when they're not involved. So we have a detailed procedures. Again, these procedures have all been reviewed and meet the guidelines that Dr. Brewster had outlined on her COVID page for sports. So we feel very confident in our procedures. We know that kids are going to probably attract, you know, as Dr. Smith has stated before, and we all understand the nature of this virus. It's not going to be perfect. We're going to have to adjust. We're going to have kids and athletes and other people that probably contract the virus. So we have plans in place for that. We've been in consultation with the Health Department. Throughout the process, they've been wonderful, even though they're extremely, extremely busy, they've been very great with us to get us quick and easy decisions. We try to communicate that as much as we can, so, you know. All of our coaches are masked at all times during practice. Our kids are the only ones that remove their mask, and that is only if they're in vigorous activity. Hand sanitizing stations, constant reminders to wash our hands, for limited use to inside activities in the weight room to groups of 15. So we believe that we have implemented all of our plans and our procedures.
I'll make two comments. I know most of the sports teams have designated a, like a social distance- I know most of the sports teams have designated a, like a social distance coach, that his or her only job is to make sure that if the kids aren't on the field or doing drills, that whoever's milling around is six feet apart. And then just through our own experience with my children playing travel ball throughout the summer, I will have to say that the protocols that are in place at the high school right now for the sports teams are much more stringent than what they are at multi-team tournaments across state lines with hundreds of children. So, so that, once again, great job to, you know, to Mike, to you and your committee, so. Oh, Mary, go. She's still muted. Is she muted on her computer, Scott? You can't help her. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Mary, now you're live.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for that.
That's okay.
Anyway, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Watson for including the variety of stakeholders on his committee and fully implementing the procedures as outlined by the St. Mary's County Health Department. Mr. Watson, I want to thank you for exhibiting a teamwork, resiliency, elaboration, and respectfully working with the people and the county, and the people outside the county to develop a suitable plan for St. Mary's County Public Schools, especially the engagement plan. So it was a lot of work, and I appreciate all you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, greatly appreciate that. I'd be remiss if I didn't give most of the credit here to the athletic directors and our coaches, for the ones in the trenches actually trying to put and implement these plan and procedures. So kudos to all of our athletic directors and all of our coaches who are making this happen for our kids.
I agree, I agree with you completely.
Right. And thank them for the variety of schedules that they have made, and torn up, and made, and torn up, and made again, and so, and also, let's just also keep in mind that within, within even our only, our SMAC conference, we are the only county that has sports running currently right now. The other two counties do not. So hats off again. So way to blaze the trail.
All right. I have one last thing before I conclude. Of course, this is just some of the tweeted pictures. So to be very clear, we are moving forward with, we are continuing with, we already have a plan, we're in the middle of our plan, we're sticking to our plan, no matter what announcement might come next, or an option, or a this, or a that, we really think that this is the best for our kids, and the most flexible and appropriate for the situation we find ourselves in. And those are some great pictures of kids actually engaged in sports-specific activities. The, we are, we're going to be pushing out later this week, and it's going to go out in the Signal on Monday, and Monday message, and across our social media, recognizing excellence. So we are, we're going to put out to our, all of our community, our parents, our teachers, our support staff, excellence in online teaching, the ability to nominate a particular educator. It's a, it's awesome online teaching at Bitly. We'll push it out on, because we, we want to, when we come together in the board, for board meetings, we want to give you some really great examples of some of the incredibly committed and creative ways teachers are going above and beyond to, to harness the power of virtual instruction. There are certainly some things that we can do virtually that we'd struggle to do in a classroom, and often we're, we're focusing on, this is terrible, this is terrible, this is terrible, I want, I want, I want, because we are in that situation. But there are, there are some rays of sun, there are some real positive, and when we finally get to the point where we all come back together again, the, the bounding forth with the technology and the learning management system, and the platform, and the ability to bring people in and Zoom, I do believe that it's going to be transformative in a, in a, in a positive way. So we're going to push this out, we hope we get hundreds and thousands of, of people responding so that we can bring back to you and highlight some of our great teachers.
Interestingly enough, on NBC4 yesterday, the evening news, Leon Harris does a segment called Harris's Heroes, and he asks for just this specific thing. He wants people to nominate teachers who are doing incredible work on, teaching virtually, and they want to start to highlight that. I would imagine that there are other local stations that are more than likely going to do the same thing, so I would imagine that we might take some of those and push them forward, or that parents, well, certainly.
Absolutely. And you'll see that there was a reimagining of the St. Mary's County Public Schools logo that dates back to the last century, where you see a book opening into a sailboat, and Mr. Barrett Brooks, who is just an incredibly gifted illustrator and a graphic artist, looked at, said, you know, let's turn that into a computer. And it's the same thing, it's the setting sail digitally. So it's a really, I just, it's a, it's a great image to push out, and I think that is where we are, and so we wanted to end with a bit of, of positive, and what we're doing to, to, to really put a, put a light onto some of the incredible work that's going forward for our kids by our educators.
Okay. Mary? But you're muted, you're muted.
You muted yourself.
I think the sound was coming from...
Still muted.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. I muted myself because somebody heard some background noise. Anyway, I want to thank you for, Scott, recognizing the teachers, because that is an effective way that we can retain and recruit teachers by showing that we are a simple school system which recognizes exemplary work by our employees. So I think that's good, and I like the new logo, too. It still looks like a book, which is good, too. So I think that's great, I like it. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
I believe Jim would like to say something.
Oh, Jim?
Dr. Smith, to echo, with the benefits of virtual learning, after we mainstream all of our students, they're going to have a mechanism for research, essentially having a library of Congress, you know, in their, in their, in their, in their homes. So I think there's some great benefits down the road, virtual learning.
Absolutely, absolutely. And with that, I conclude my very, 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 very long remarks.
I'm going to have to give you a limit. All right, we have public comment peg?
We have one public comment.
Okay. All right, so if that, you will call that person to the podium, I will read my statement.
Samantha Watson?
Okay, so before you begin, just, "We welcome public input on policies and procedures and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. Please do not, this is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. We also sit as an appellate body in both student-employee appeals. If you have any knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate in that event, please, prevent us from making an unbiased decision. We cannot have comments regarding any individual student or personnel issues presented. And you signed at the beginning of the meeting, you're limited to three minutes, and you may not yield your time to someone else."
Good morning, Superintendent Smith and board members. My name's Samantha Watson, and I'm here this morning as a concerned parent and employee of St. Mary's County Public Schools Transportation. I am a special needs bus driver, and I want nothing more to be back on my bus and with my kids, which I'm happy to see that it will happen on the 7th, I will be seeing some of my students. I believe there are still unresolved issues that have not been addressed, especially for us bus drivers. I feel like that once again, that we are being forgotten about. We are the low men and women on the totem pole, and it shouldn't be this way. I do not speak for all bus drivers, this is just how I feel. First issue I would like to bring up is pay. I'm grateful for the pay raise, and I'm grateful for getting paid during this time off, and I'm grateful that I am going back to work. The issue I'm having is that during one of your town hall meetings, when you gave us the pay raise, it sounded like it was an agreement that us bus drivers would get paid like we did in the springtime with our normal hours that we work. Come to find out, this was not the case for me and some other drivers that I know. I normally work a nine-and-a-half hour day on my bus, and I get paid that during springtime. But now I'm getting paid, but now I'm not getting my normal pay. I've been cut to six hours a day until we go back to work, which we will be soon, and I'm losing three and a half hours of pay a day. I'm making $50 less a month than I did on unemployment. Thank God my husband's job hasn't shut down during this time, but it's still putting a financial strain on us during this time, and money is tight because I'm not getting my full amount. What about the single mothers that work the same hours I do that depend on their full paycheck? If it was already written in the budget for us to have our full pay, I don't understand why the board decided to cut us, you drivers that work over six hours. Where is that money going to? Second, I am a driver with a suppressed immune system as I am diabetic. I've asked several times, what happens if we get sick? Some drivers are responsible for paying their subs and finding them. There lies the issue. There's no set amount to pay subs, and a lot of the subs charge more than what a driver makes in a day. This is not fair. I believe there should be a set amount we pay subs, and it be in writing that they cannot ask to be paid more than what a driver gets paid in a day. Another issue is finding a sub. We're very shorthanded. If we get COVID, how are we finding a sub for two weeks or longer? Another issue is who's paying the sub if we get COVID and we're out for two weeks or longer? Who's going to pay me or my other follower drivers if we get sick? When I asked this at a recent driver meeting, I was told there was programs to pay us. What programs? Unemployment? Do you know how long it takes to get a claim approved? I could be back at work before I get paid. How am I supposed to pay the sub out of my own pocket? It's not fair for us drivers or contractors to pay a sub that long, and us drivers to lose pay. Third, the product we're using to disinfect the bus, are we sure that this product will not cause children to have allergic reaction, especially special needs, Head Start, pre-K, and kindergarten? Will it be dried before we start the buses in the morning? Will it stay in their clothes? Fourth, if a child is sent home with symptoms of COVID, are the drivers going to be told? We're usually never told if a student is sent home sick. Fifth, the flu and COVID have the same symptom, what in the process, if we get sick, what are you guys determined to do if it's the flu? How are you going to determine if it's the flu or COVID? If the flu, and if it is the flu, are we going to be required to drive? I have several times drove my bus sick because of no subs. These are few issues that I believe need answers to, and I do have more, but I'm running out of time, which I've already did. I would love to have a discussion with the board, Superintendent Smith, Mr. Thompson, to discuss this further, and get the answers we needed, if you all please will do this. Thank you for your time.
And I did fail to mention that if you do have written comments, you can give them to Peg, and then she scans and sends everything in, and so we have, we have a record of it, too.
Okay.
Okay, so. Okay, that was the other public comment? Okay. All right, so, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes for September 23rd, 2020. There are no teacher hires, no administrative and supervisory hires. There is the Health Department partnership purchase of face masks and Wilson language training, and again, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, Mary?
Aye.
Jim? Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, so we have no action items or information items. Does anyone have anything else to say for the good of the clause?
If, if I may, I just, a little bit more about the, the agreement with the Health Department to buy over 1.3 million single-use, daily-use face masks, both in the adult and child size. When we come back at our next board meeting, I'll give some more specific information about this, but it's just, I'd just like to thank publicly Dr. Brewster and all those members of the Health Department who've worked so collaboratively and so creatively with our finance office, with Tammy McCourt, and with our safety and security office, with Mike Wyant in particular. That's a heck of a resource that we certainly didn't have funds allocated to cover, and that also will be quite an assurance, knowing that pretty much within arms' reach anywhere across the system, you're going to be able to have a, a, a face mask available to you.
I just want to make one comment. Don't forget about lunches that are being provided at the schools. I did see someone dressed up as a pizza outside Leonard Town Middle School, so, with their sign, reminding people for a student, well, for children 18 and under to pick up their meal.
Absolutely.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned.